All right, I will call this meeting to order. This is the Glendale River Hills School Board Meeting of August twenty 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 five. And I will take roll call. Chris Robinson.
Yeah.
Katie Avalos.
Here.
Karen Cronwell.
Here.
Danielle Bailey.
Present.
And Carla Pennington Cross is also here and present. All are present and accounted for. At this time, you may stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance if you wish.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on to one D, agenda approval.
Move to approve the agenda as presented. Second.
All right, motion by Karen Cronwell, second by Chris Robinson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda is approved. Moving on to one E, board meeting minutes for August sixth.
I move to approve the meeting minutes for August sixth.
Second.
Any comments or revisions needed?
Um, Karen's last name is spelled wrong a couple of times.
It's true. As I said right now.
Yeah, is it with a K?
Oh, no, it's with an M.
Um.
Well, Cromwell, I was like, am I, have I been saying it wrong?
No.
It's consistent.
Oh, there it is. Not a huge deal.
Actually, my name is kind of a big deal.
Okay.
It's a huge deal.
Cromwell is the guy who was bedded by Henry the Eighth?
Yes, indeed.
Yeah, okay.
And he's also, by the way, the name I thought I was marrying into until a few weeks before marrying.
Way to pay attention.
I haven't been married in my life since I was fourteen years. This is, uh,
Okay.
Other than that, often.
Okay, with the revisions to properly spell Karen's name. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Meeting minutes are approved. Meeting grounding, I believe. Karen, you have agreed to lead our bracket. Thank you.
So, kind of building, if I what Pearl had brought over last time with Ross Green. This is something, as any educator has had at some point, if they're fortunate, somebody gave you a gift. And I loved that it was not a candle or lotion. So, you get a lot of those. So, it says, because you believed in me, I believed in you. And this was a kiddo with gum syndrome whose family had had, and also had had a stroke in the utero. And there had been a lot of just, oh, because I can't, right? And what I love about our district is we're strength-based focused. We are whole child-centered. And as we're walking into a year, it's already complicated, because New Years always are. We've got a thing.
Ooh. The flood.
The flood. And I just want us to all give grace and make space and remember that people are already working really hard. And also, there's other stuff. And there's other stuff in everybody's life, even if it wasn't a flood. So, I just appreciate that we really practice that here. We strive for it. And also, I hope that we can extend that same grace to our staff, and our staff extend that grace to our students, and have our families start to learn to extend that grace to us continuously as well. So that we can continue. So that was my thing.
Hmm, thank you, Karen. I think all our minds are in that space, which is fantastic. Sit down for a second. That's fun. All right, moving on to public comments at this time. If you wish to speak on any non-agenda item and you're a visitor, you may do so. Mr. Martin?
Wayne Martin, seventy-two, seventy-five, North Port Washington Road, apartment twelve-twenty-one, Glendale, Wisconsin, five-three-two-one-seven. Regarding the flood, was there any damage to Parkway or Glen Hills, and if so, is going to lay school sergey?
Yeah. We did have damage to, um, all three buildings, um, in sub-capacity, um, at Glen Hills. Most of the damage was in the senior center. We do not believe that any of that damage will preclude us from opening our doors in time to welcome our students back. Um, but we'll need some medication. Uh, we had some water flooding at Parkway, and so we needed to replace some mechanical equipment in the boiler room. And then we also had flooding at Good Hope, which, uh, let the water here without, um, being able to be operational, so that will need to be replaced as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks for that excellent question. Uh, anyone else online? You. All right, uh, moving on to item three A, Summer Academy update.
All right, so Jenica Stick is going to present on her work, um, a work of Laura Hoff, who led our summer school programming, um, this summer, and sort of the outcomes of the academic and social work that went into that for students.
Hey, we do have a slide deck here. I'm gonna do it on my screen over here. I know it's very busy, so. That won't happen again. All right, so, uh, it's on Summer Academy twenty twenty-five. Um, I'm gonna talk through that. Um, a lot of work in you're seeing kind of the end result of it, but a lot of work went in on the front end. So I just did, wanna give a shout out to Laura Hoff, who isn't here tonight, um, who is my side-by-side partner. I'm getting all this up and running and getting it going, so I'll share some of the results, um, in this slide deck. So just sort of do an overview of Summer Academy, um, some of the staffing, the enrollment we had. And we, we gathered as much feedback as possible this year. This was our first round of doing it, um, together, so I'm sorry, just spent this on in the past, so this is kind of a new, um, group of people, um, leading the work, so we just wanted to gather as much feedback as we could, and then really start reflecting on possible next steps, um, for planning for next year. So just an overview, I did link in, um, keep scrolling. Up, back a little bit, you're on slide three, overview of Summer Academy. Right there. So I did link in the course, um, guidebook, so that was created this summer, um, prior to Summer Academy, and that was sent out to all families, and that was part of our signup process as well. Um, it had a lot of information in there around our policies, the course offerings, and we tried to make it a little more manageable in ways that people could look it up despite their grade level. Yeah. And doing it by grade level. Um, looks fantastic. So, um, we got a, got some feedback from staff and some families around that as well, so we'll be continuing to clean that up. Um, and then it ran for, um, four weeks this summer. And then enrollment, um, dates were April third to April twenty-fifth. Um, and then we had, um, it was a new four-week program, but we also had some flexible scheduling of staff this year, and then we also had, um, some classes that were offered just half-day too, so we had flexible schedules for students and then also for staff. Um, so when looking at the total staffing, um, we have twenty certified staff members participate. We had, um, sixteen of those who are our certified, um, district teachers. So we had quite a few, um, members of our staff participate. We had eighteen support staff. Those were all district, um, support staff members. I mean, Laura Hoff is our, um, academy coordinator, and then our health, health secretary was there, so she jumped into that position, which was wonderful. Um, we had sixty-eight classes running, and then seventeen classes were offered per session. We had four sessions throughout the day. Um, some of the new things that we had was we added that marching band, um, which was a two-week of marching band, and then they had two weeks of drumming, so that was two hours per day. And so that blocked scheduling also for, um, our youngest learners, and they're getting ready classes, so we did some block scheduling. So we didn't have a lot of four- and five-year-olds transitioning every hour, um, throughout the public, just trying to alleviate some of that. Um, so we had three hundred forty-eight students enrolled in Summer Academy, and that's pretty consistent with past numbers, I believe. Um, I just wanted to put a couple pictures in here. So this is, um, students in, in super scientist class. We worked with Milwaukee, and they brought in kids for, um, the science class, so they did a lot of building and all different activities with the science kits that were provided. Um, we gathered feedback from families, from staff, and from students for Summer Academy. I'm gonna walk through the family feedback. We had thirty-six families out of a hundred and eighty families, and that's a hundred and eighty estimate, because I had to go off of family emails, so I didn't gather that information when thinking about this. You see the breakdown, mostly Parkway families, um, participated in the survey versus the Glen Hills. Um, and then they were asked how satisfied they were with students' experience of Summer Academy, so we had very satisfied, about fifty-three percent satisfied, thirty-six percent, and neutral, we're about five people at forty percent. You know, dissatisfied, zero, the same. And it's interesting when you break it down a little further, when you start looking at, um, Parkway versus Glen Hills, the, the experiences for students, so, um, students that, um, their students were, um, from Glen Hills, they were more in the neutral zone than the others. Yeah. And it clearly, historically consistent. Yeah, and we're seeing that trend throughout all the surveys. Um, how effective was communication? So about seventy-five percent effective, um, seventeen percent somewhat, and nine percent deep, nine percent negative. So we have some growing areas there. And welcome and supported. We had a large percent of our families that felt welcome and supported. That's a good question.
Yes, and, um, so when we have like, I mean, this looks like it's maybe one family, you know, or two that say no. Is this, is the survey anonymous, or do you have a means to like reach out to a family when they, when they give this kind of feedback to like connect directly with them?
It's, it's anonymous, but a, a good follow-up question would be why? You know what I mean? Like, when you ask them if they did a survey?
Well, why?
Yeah, so you ask their question, or then, you know?
Or could they like check a box where it's like, are you, like, if you want someone to contact you about your experience, like, please give us your information? You know, like just showing that we want to connect?
Yeah, I think we do have, like I did ask some follow-up questions on some of these things. I just, a lot of it may have teacher names or except that, so I just didn't want to put that in there, so that's kind of in the trends. So I kind of gathered that information for that.
Okay.
And do you feel the program provided new learning activities? I'm not gonna go through all of these, I'm gonna kind of see the data, so a decent percentage, would you enroll your student again? Um, the green is there because a lot of our, um, students are gonna be aging out of Summer Academy, so I put that in there. And then just big trends from the family feedback. I did ask them, like, what would you suggest to make Summer Academy better for your students? So just trying to gather any, any thoughts and feedback from families. Um, there was feedback around, there was mixed feedback on communication. Thank you for the clear and consistent communication, then also, um, communication came out later than it did the year before, and so, so we just need to make sure that we get it in, in multiple places. So I think parent square will be a nice case with the communication plan, so I think we're on a roll with some of those things. Um, also doing it earlier is, um, something we'd like to strive for this year, instead of waiting till like March, April. It's a perennial complaint. As long as I remember, it's been a complaint. Why haven't we heard about Summer Academy yet?
But here it was, it was consistently like right before, or you wouldn't know courses until the day of sign, or like certain things were kind of last minute, but as a parent who's new to camp signups in the last like year, it's like things get pushed more. Like, I have to sign up for a camp in October to get my kids in the, the mini-camp, so like, there's like all this pressure to like know what your kid's gonna do, what's it gonna conflict with, so.
And I think we're starting our forward planning now, so that we're ready to do it earlier.
Yeah.
Right? So then we'll look at, you know, like a January, February.
That'd be fantastic.
Especially with all the Milwaukee and all that, getting, a lot of the parents suggested before some of that comes out, just for planning. Um, because there are a lot of students that miss like a week because of a camp, or, you know, and they'd like to play crowd, which makes total sense. Um, safety issues with students who walk because of no sidewalks, so that, um, there were parents, a lot of students were walking to school to Summer Academy, but there was no sidewalks.
I'm glad they love, like for them, but they do that during. Oh, that's.
But there's a blessing, busing, and there's some younger students, so, I mean, there was at least ten parents that suggested that possibly we have people out in the streets and stuff like that, so. That's tough one. And we just don't have the silence. Um, additional offerings, um, for sixth and seventh grade students, so a lot of families had some really good suggestions around, um, some possible cooking classes for tech, for the digital presentations, getting some more of that, um, tech happening, and a lot of project-based, um, learning activities for students. Um, and you, some of this mirrors with student information. Um, K-four and second grade drop-off was an improvement, and we gave our opportunities for families to connect with each other, so we did something different. Instead of having the kids go out to the cars, we had everyone meet in the commons, so drop-off and pickup, so that, um, students were able to introduce their friends, so the families, and everyone met together.
Yeah.
And then when picked up together.
Exactly.
It was, they had connections that people were making, and they were able to talk with the teachers and all of that, so it was, it was beautiful. I only got to see it once. But I heard good things about it. Um, and then absolutely more water breaks. So, it's just trends that are blowing up.
Yeah, that's good to know, so, you know.
I'm thinking about how we're managing some of those pieces, putting in some possible water breaks throughout the days. Here's a nice little picture, a little spark time. Okay, and then on the staff feedback. So we had, um, fifteen staff members complete the feedback survey. Um, seventy-three percent responded, and seventy-three percent of certified staff responded, twenty-seven support staff. Overall experience was. And I'm looking at, do they feel safe? So just being consistent with some of the district surveys, just so we can kind of align some of our things. Um, again, everyone. See? Um, how would you rate your, the communication? So about eighty percent, so we do have a little growing area there around communication, but, um, overall pretty, pretty good. And then everyone liked to work in it, so. For our retention.
Yeah.
And then just some of the trends for the staff feedback. Um, the staff preferred the four weeks. Um, they felt that gave them enough summer. Get everything they wanted to do done and relax and rejuvenate. And they liked the flexibility. This year, we did, um, job sharing, so that a teacher could work two weeks, and then another teacher could pick up the last two weeks. There's just a lot of flexibility within the scheduling, um, that made things, um, I think it was a really benefit for teachers and for students. Um, again, that drop-off, pickup, everyone loved that. Um, the teachers, the families, um, we will be sticking with that. And then also, we put some new systems in place of procedures, and just, um, created a staff handbook around Summer Academy, so that was really helpful for a goal-to-document, um, for everything Summer Academy. And just another shout out to Laura Hoff, um, who did some job supporting staff, um, with everything. And I pictured this was one of the play classes, play and learn, they were, oh, they're Legos. And then on to student feedback. So, um, for our K-four to the second grade students, we did, um, we did paper pencil for all students, but we did smiley faces, and they just circled, smiley sound, happy. And then for the third through seventh grade, there was questions that mirrored the K-four, um, the second grade questions, then also asking a lot of feedback questions, just trying to get as much information from, um, our older students as possible. So I'm looking at our youngest learners. Did you like Summer Academy? So, a lot of them did. They, a lot of them enjoyed it. Um, did you learn new things? Um, a large percent did.
Yeah, they definitely.
And then when we look at, the last, they said fun. They enjoyed it, and then they also felt pretty safe in Summer Academy. Um, the only comments, a couple gets getting lost in remembering how to go to their different places. But overall, some really good feedback there. Our third through seventh grade students were completely honest. They're very good. Which is, which is good, we want. So I enjoyed reading, I actually took them all home and typed all of this in, and it was just enjoyable, just going through and listening to their voices, so it was. Um, how much did you enjoy it? So fifty percent, a lot. About thirty-six, a little. Um, ten percent, not much, and not at all, we had six-point-three percent. Did you feel like you learned new things? That's a, that was pretty mixed, right? Yes, no, somewhat, so. That's a higher number than I expected to see, actually, given the reactions I've seen from most upper middle schoolers. You know, to Summer Academy.
No.
Yeah. Just a lot of complaining. But to me, this seems a positive outcome.
Yeah.
But here's, here's the thing, I guess they really enjoyed it. So this was with, this was with the drumming. And then we have lesson, lessons and activities, interesting, so still a little higher on the yes, but and then also felt supported by staff, so that was, that was good, and sixty-seven percent felt supported by staff.
I mean, more so, I would say, over eighty percent had, had relatively good feedback.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, positive to present.
Um, did you feel safe? So a large percent of students did, so that was that five percent that said no. And would you like to attend Summer Academy again? I did ask a follow-up question, this one. Um, seventy-three percent, um, said yes, and about twenty-seven percent said no. So here are, here are some of the trends. These are just making me laugh. Phones, candy and phones.
I know.
That was really, that was, that was clear on a lot of the feedback. Um, that's definitely just on phones, but then, you know, how do you, how do you offer something that is ten more tech-like than we could do, like ad, ad-free podcasts, or do something that, you know, kids have access to some of those spaces? And so it's a valid, right?
That's not what you think they mean here, is it?
They're meaning like they want.
They want to just be, have access to.
Yeah, but how, how do we offer something that is similar?
Gives them a dopamine hit, but actually teaches them.
Yeah, or gives them that opportunity to be with their friends, or, you know, communicate, you know, in a different way. So, um, just the variety of classes, I think we need to up our game on that, or, um, and again, first you're going through it, clearly, we need to up our game a little bit on that. So soccer, cooking, you know, they, they had some of the same things that parents have. So like, even though that was pretty cool. Um, the start time is way too early. They'd like to sleep in.
By eight to the city. At eight o'clock, eight to five.
That's like, you know. Um, cool. So they really liked that band performance. They appreciated that. Um, having opportunities to sign up and be a support in some of the earlier classes. Um, instead of going to class themselves, they'd like to be a, a teacher. So. I love that idea. To sign up for your sessions to be a support teacher. So I think that would be very good. You had a few high school volunteers, right? I know my son was one, Sophie.
Yeah.
And it, when I read that one, it made me think of service opportunities. If we were to ever have a service um, requirement for graduation, this would be a way to fill it and to help kids become more leaders as they step up into high school and prepare for that. I love that students are thinking about that.
Yeah. You could all connect Glen Hills to Parkway students too, like it could be something where you could think about connecting them throughout the year, like if, it's like not like they're probably their sister, but like during, or figuring out how to carry out the childrens that might be formed there.
And then they enjoyed being with their friends, so. Some good opportunities for that. Um, some of the fun feedback was, I'd rather be home, you know, for the night, and my mom and dad make.
Or support their Minecraft coding class.
Yeah, I know, like, yeah, there's different things, like, um, you have James who came to us and is a lot of gaming experience. There, there's so many opportunities for us to start planning, some really cool things.
And it's also true that some of these kids are forced to come, because their parents don't want them home, so that's a valid feedback.
Or can't have them at home because they were.
So, I mean, it's, it's not our fault.
So, yeah, can we, but can we offer some, you know?
A hundred percent, yeah.
The gaming issue is always an interesting one to be, because, you know, colleges have gaming clubs and gaming scholarships, and they're uh, it's complicated, right? Do I want middle schoolers gaming in our classrooms? No, I'm fifty-eight years old, but gosh. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I have to like stop being a homer about this issue. And this was our drumming, um, last eight years. They did a performance. So we had two, um, two weeks of the marching band performance. They did that at, uh, July, at Stradivarius, and then we had a concert with our drum performance. And then thinking about next steps, I'm really creating, um, a parent suggested having a one-stop shop for everything, um, Summer Academy, like a one-page, so I thought that was a great idea. Um, and then just creating that, um, communication were flow, so that, you know, whoever does anything, it's Laura again, and we just had that whole communication plan made out, um, just kind of bumping everything back a little earlier. I'm gonna put on there that enrollment period, possibly February, March, January, getting the information out, and doing enrollment February, and then sharing everything out by March. Um, research, um, and cultivate some upper elementary middle school resources. So we're thinking about, um, how are we utilizing our community? You know, we talked about service things, that are, we can walk a lot of places. So hopefully we help support our community too, so just kind of researching some of that, what are some options? Um, and even having kids be able to follow their own, own pathway, um, possibly in the upper elementary. So a lot of things going on, so we just have to kind of see how that looks on paper. I get all excited by this, as you know, but like the idea of a service project class, kind of like what we did with the end groups, right, where you can put students together, doing service projects for local community organizations. It's just very cool, I think, right? Yeah, very, very uplift idea. Yeah, because, and I, I think a lot of students would jump on board with that.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Um, again, um, also, having some student focus groups, asking that, you know, what, what would you like to see, you know, during Summer Academy? So I have the student volunteers on there, doing more planning around the act twenty sessions, so just thinking about how we're layering in public classes as well. So we started that this year, so we'll continue to, um, add and grow, um, next year before the policy completely kicks in. And then review on the K-four third grade offerings. Um, we had a lot of offerings, and but so many students wanted to be in certain classes, so we're gonna get rid of the ones that didn't fill, and then just reorganize. And then investigating whether or not we should open it up to students going into K-four. So just investigating, not saying anything, we just wanna look into what that would might look like. So that's kind of where we're sitting, and it was like a big huge performance for Summer Academy, so it, it was a, a joy to take part in that.
Thank you.
Um, one thing I'm thinking is that if you want to improve, um, survey responses from families, you might wait until the fall to do the survey, because I, I know when my kids do Summer Academy, the last day, I was like hands wiped of school for a month. I stopped checking my emails or opening anything from Glendale River Hills. So I was, I was done. And I'm, I'm not even exaggerating. I don't know if you guys were like, like, in the summer. I'd just be like, end of August, I'll start paying attention again. So I don't know if it's too late, if folks forget, but it, it might be good to.
It'd be a permanent link, kind of, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, like permanently.
People can give feedback at any time, really.
Yes, I say, it just like, sure, I would get to. Right now may not be the best time. No, no, no. So, um, yeah, staggering more of that, absolutely. And it, it was a little bit of a quick, quick turnaround. I didn't have an opportunity to talk to it.
I think this information was really well-written.
Yeah, yes.
And it was comprehensive, so I appreciate the overview.
And I love the handbook. Chris, send the floor to you.
Um, um, thank you for, for taking the leadership on this and, and working collaboratively with others to put it together. This was an amazing presentation. I like all the forward-thinking and, um, just the, the growth-oriented nature of it, and everything you touched turns out well.
It's exciting work, so.
Yeah. Thanks, Chris. Thank you.
So, I thought that pulling marching bands into the Summer Academy was absolutely brilliant. And I love that you have found a way for Ms. Miracle to be able to bring back high school students who still wanted to be marching band. Um, she plans to grow that into quite the sure thing, and I think it's wonderful, like the daughter's about to go to eighth grade, and she tends to come back until she can. What, to the other point, like growing in other classes for those older kids would be great, because she almost skipped it entirely, because she's like, I don't want to take the other classes.
Right.
So if it hadn't been the option to leave after band, she wouldn't have done it at all. So finding something else she wants to do also, so my husband doesn't have to turn around and pick her up right away?
Yeah.
Then he, that'd be wonderful.
I really like your idea about having focus groups of kids, and I wouldn't limit it to the kids who participated. I would want to ask pretty much everybody, because I think I would wanna ask pretty much everybody, because I think that would give us a comprehensive perspective, right?
Yeah, that's a good point, but the key is not to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and kind of get a better understanding of, you know, what would be interesting, and then give us time to roll out what's usable. Right, and we can explore other things in future years, but, um. I would be very curious about, you know, what the process is, as you explore that, bringing in our new, our incoming K fours, what that might look like and how that might feel. So I think that's an interesting question around, you know, kindergarten readiness and routines and participating group activities. But also, is it the same people, right, that, who they're going to be with in the year, does that matter? I don't know, kids are gonna be resilient that way. But I, I'm interested, I'll be interested to hear what, where you guys land in the next year and then the year ahead, it's a journey.
Yeah, it's exploring.
Um, yes, I love this, I love, I, it is, I love it. Um, the, does Milestones do any summer programming here at our, at our location?
Nicolay does.
Oh, Nicolay has a Milestones?
Like similar, I can't, so they're, they're located, they're not in the gym and they kind of take over.
So. Did, uh, Milestones at Lake Bluff this summer, and he's incoming K four, so like. If there was an opportunity like that, I mean, I guess there isn't Nicolay, but, or thinking about partner.
She means Nicolay runs it here.
Oh, they run it here.
Nicolay Rec, not the high school, Nicolay Rec.
Oh.
Runs it here.
Or like little kids.
For after Summer Academy, right?
Oh, that's Camp at the Hills.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I, I guess I'm thinking more about like bringing little, like doing something for littles, like that's more like. Anyway, just thinking about what you're saying. Okay, thanks. Um, and then just like, this is not a like right now like thought, but I'm just thinking about like, when you, like, this is amazing, and as you get like settled into it and that. Content grows and the, like, interest grows, I think about like. Growing even more, like, is it possible to do more sessions, or like, is it possible to do like a later session ramping up to school? I think about like tutoring and like how intensive tutoring or tutoring can be really helpful and how you've got the ready classes, so just kind of like. Wondering what might be possible down the line, when this is a well-oiled machine, right?
Yeah, we've talked about, you know, running like two weeks, two weeks, two, you know, and then having staff.
Yeah.
Cause it's about staff, right, to, you know, to run it.
Yeah.
So looking at other models and their history, so.
Because the end of August can be like kind of a dearth for camps for people, right, and just, um. That time in the middle of July can also be like for families, like travel time, and so like, we didn't do it because it conflicted with one or two camps, right, but like. Anyway, yeah.
Buildings and grounds too, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Rules and making sure things are ready, right?
So I, yeah, I feel.
A lot to work around.
Yeah, it kind of feels like once you feel like this is, uh, like you could explore. Thank you, this was great. Thank you, Jenica.
Yeah.
Love it. Onward, anyone? Remember, oh, I'm here, um. Say your name and address.
Michelle Thirsty, um, sixty-five, twenty-five, right, the Frenchline Road, Glendale. I'm just curious, and I don't wanna step on the rec's toes that up. But have you thought about, as you were saying, the older kids could, different courses, maybe like first aid or babysitting courses during that time? Oh, yeah. To get that, because that could be something, but you don't wanna bump into the rec group.
They only offer it like once, like one session though, I think.
Right, not that much, but if you did that, that would have.
My kids wanna spend. Sewing, all of that, it's, it was a matter of finding the staffing for that, so.
So I don't know if even the rec is coming to.
Sewing.
Or Korean cooking.
I could teach Korean cooking.
Like the survey teacher.
They have not certified.
Does she need an emergency license? Like, we could work on that.
Yeah.
Does a lot of it count?
Maybe some other things we can do.
Onward, anyone else, anyone on?
No comment.
Thanks for that. Student assessment plan. Jenica, have you stayed for that?
Yep. I need, I need copies.
Ah, thank you.
I just, I'm gonna do it, I'm gonna screenshot.
And we'll try to, we'll try to let you finish your presentation and hold on to our questions.
Oh, that's exciting.
Sorry.
We got excited.
Really hard.
We're gonna work really hard to take note and hold our thought.
I needed that reminder before, so.
We all did. Well, I think we're excited, there's Summer Academy information and.
No, no, we're on the roll.
One terrifying question about the graphs. The district assessment calendar, does it have everything from both schools on it, so I can just look at that one and not put it between, thank you.
Great. I think the, the nice thing was that you've been able to, you're able to see that it's not so much. When you look at.
Yes, would you separate it out?
Yeah. Okay, but I will go over this, um, so the first column there is, um. Our tentative dates, so they're windows, and so that doesn't mean that students are being assessed every single one of those days, it just means the window of assessment. So, um, we have in the blue the screening assessments, so these are assessments that, um, we currently have been doing, or we look at Star, ELA and Math. We've been currently doing that for, um, Glen Hills, four through eighth graders. Every year during the fall, spring and. Um, the COGAT is a, is a, it's not a new assessment, but it's an assessment we'd like to add for our current third graders. It's a screener, um, for gifted and talented, so we would like to do some universal screening, um, for students, cause sometimes our system right now is. Um, a parent says something, or a teacher says something, and we're kind of missing the vote on that. So we wanted to just do a universal screener on that to kind of see, see where students land, and then any other, um, student that might be moved to the district, we would do screening again in sixth grade. So just trying something new around that, especially coming here, so that's the COGAT, that's a screening assessment in that there will. Is this, is this different?
Well, she, she's looking at.
Yeah, yours says GDRH, but ours is.
Could you go to the district?
Sure.
That's, I think that's, um. District one.
There you go, that's. There it is, okay. Trying to figure, sorry. Yeah, let's get here, it's a yes. I have to change my reading glasses to better one.
Okay.
I'm not even kidding. Hold on, okay. Upgrading, gotcha.
All right, the fourth column is Ames Web Map. Um, in the past, we use Star Map at, um, Parkway. Um, we use that for K five through third grade. We are shifting to the Ames Web Map that aligns with the Ames Web that we're using for ELA. Um, the nice thing about the Ames Web Map is in K four, K five and first grade, it is a one-to-one assessment. The star assessment was a computer-based assessment in K five, first, second and third. So now we're gonna be doing more of a one-to-one, getting a little different type data. Um, and it is very similar to some of our current assessments that we already do. In, at Parkway, in the younger grades, so we'll be pulling those assessments away and replacing those with the Ames Web Map. Cause we do a lot of one-on-one assessments anyways, because we weren't getting the data we needed from the star.
Right.
So, um, we are kind of piloting the K four assessment, the teachers wanted to try the Ames Web Map. Um, because it is nationally normed, just to kind of see where students are landing, so we're gonna kind of give that a go. Um, we wanted to start that in September too, you might be surprised at that date, but that's such a nice time for teachers to have that one-on-one with students in their classrooms. What are you interested in? And have companies number, do you know what I mean, you could layer all that in, and then we just do a couple of students a day. So it's not like straight assessment, it's all day. So I just wanted to layer that in for you. Second and third grade for Ames Web Map is on the computer. So those are our screening assessments that we do three times a year, those are the, kind of the district assessments. Then we get into the purple section, and those are state assessments. So the first column is the Ames Web Plus Literacy, that is at twenty, that is mandated. So all students take part in that, there's double columns there, um, so October sixth through the seventeenth. Four K through third grade are gonna have screening, so that's when they have their screener. And then the following dates are any diagnostics that we need to do, so we just wanna lay that out for our staff. As to being a screener, and then any child that might be at risk based on that screener, will have those follow-up diagnostics, so that's. Not testing the entire time, just testing the needs. Then we have the stats and homework, and you're all familiar with that, so we have four through eighth grade assessing, and then also third grade assessing. And that's two weeks of assessment, but it's one week of assessment, but then it's with makeups and all those, I was like going to with that. So we'll, we'll be doing it in a, a one-week period. And then we have the DLM, so, um, some of our students who are on alternative standards will be taking the DLM instead of the forward assessment. We were not picked for Nate this year, so that's a positive. It's a national, um, test that we have, people. Last year, and then fourth grade had it, yeah, and then fourth and eighth, the U of R, and so this is a year that we do not count, so that's a celebration. And then the light purple on the end is access testing, so our English language learners, um, take the access assessment during that window. And then during the spring, I just put on here that we do that student engagement survey, so I did put that on there as well, so that'll be an assessment for students. That's kind of the overall, and then it's broken down, um, by each building, so you can kind of see where everything lays out for the assessment. All of these, um, assessments, like when you look at our policy, there is that app done. For the fourth and eighth grade and all of that, so you probably would be.
We can't opt out of the Ames Web, just the form area.
Correct, it, it represents fourth and eighth grade. Oh, but you, you do have the ability to.
Okay, uh, Katie.
Carmen? Thank you for this. Um, I did, you know, our third grader seems to get tested quite a bit. Um, and I guess I would just wonder with regards to the COGAT, I know that's a pretty common gifted and talented screener that is used. And I know it's commonly used at third grade, I don't really understand why, and I'm wondering if we could consider perhaps exploring fourth grade. Who seem to be less tested based on this charter.
Well, fourth grade is probably tested more.
Yeah, even third grade, because fourth grade is tested on science, social studies, ELA and math for forward, or third grade is only ELA and math. So I guess it's a little lighter in that respect.
Okay, but I mean, over the course of the year, so forward is kind of isolated, right, instead of one particularly, you can, um. I, I mean, I just was kind of curious, like third grade seems to get a lot of test. And so then I was just wondering, what is the purpose of the COGAT at third grade?
I think the transition, like we have, we have more services over here.
Sure.
For gifted and talented, and that, it's nice to make a transitional plan coming into Glen Hills. So that's kind of where we landed with third grade, and we thought about possibly doing it at second grade, but second grade is heavier on one-to-one assessments than third grade. Cause they have the Ames Web Math on the computer, just like Star, and then they have the, um. The Ames Web on the computer for ELA too, so it's a computer test, except for the oral reading fluency, which is the only one. The one minute assess, which isn't much, you know, so they're, they're pretty similar. Um, but fourth grade is definitely a smaller assessment, time loss, you have minutes, and the third grade, that was the reason why. And we can have them set up, ready to roll. And doing it a little early in the school year, we can start some things.
The dates make sense.
Yeah. But I, I hear what you're saying, and this is a trial, it's our first year.
I think it's great, I mean, it gives us a great visual of what's happening and how it's happening, and I think that we clearly. Working within the requirements, tried to address like when we need the data and how to space it out. But that's the only, that was the only thing that occurred to me in this thing.
Yeah, and, and we may have to get it.
Sure.
So, yes, I mean, given your goal, we get, getting that feedback and all of that will be really important.
Sure, I would imagine families would be very happy to have a, a very consistent, like, everybody gets screened, so that they don't have to worry about. Is it a pretty flexible screener, when we have kids whose gifted and talented traits might be. Multi-dimensional, you know, that's like.
And, and it wouldn't be just that, like, we do have a quick, like, creativity screener and there's a couple other pieces to it, but that's. That's the big one. So there are some talents and different things that we may see that may not show up.
Yeah.
This screen.
Like, this would not be the doorway.
Yeah.
To pass through, that would just be one of them.
It's one, it's a piece.
Okay, thank you.
And a parent or a teacher or anybody can all just.
Yeah, oh, that was, those were, that actually, those were, I have those questions as well. Um, but I'm not familiar with the Coke AT, like, what's the, what is the format, what is it?
I, I remember the.
Oh, yes, absolutely, those.
Oh, okay.
So, okay, she's the one who's.
Got it, I can learn more about it and come back. No, yeah, that's, okay, um, the, uh. Second and third are still doing that testing on the computer, the, the star, right? Or no, no, what was it, the?
They do.
Ames Web, sorry, Ames Web, so are you still, will you need supplemental, like, one-on-one assessments? For those kids, the way you did for the earlier grades?
Um, they have one, like, for ELA, they have one assessment that's one-to-ones that were already fluency for second and third grades.
Okay.
Built in a one-to-one.
Oh, okay.
They don't have the number of assessments that are one-to-one that the other grade levels have.
Okay.
Um, I was just wondering if that was, if you're still gonna be in the same boat of not getting the right or enough information from those tests, maybe we find. As kids get older, I mean, not the iPad, cause we're like punching like. Well, and, and, and attending really liked versus really thinking about the math. I think you see it a little, little differently as you get older, and then we also have classroom assessments that we look at, and the, the teachers are also, you know, so if. If that score isn't aligned to what we're seeing in the classroom and the work a student is doing, then we're gonna question.
Sure, right, right, right. The, okay, this, I, if this was burdensome, it's not, what if, I'm just, like, for me, I'm very curious, like, I'm in K four, I'm a first grader, a second grader, a third grader, like. How many days, how many hours am I spending on exams? I think we talked about this when we talked about assessments before, as well as like. Like the, the labor on the backend and front end for teachers, but, but like, I'm, I'm, I'd be curious. How many days is my fourth grader spending taking exams out of this, whatever? I don't know if that's possible to calculate, it's not something I need to know. Maybe if the summer comes back around, it would be interesting to be like, you know, I could calculate it for all of this.
Yeah.
But like, you get it, no one on one, but anyway, I mean, there's variance too.
Right, right. Child may take fifteen minutes on a star assessment, another child may take thirty, so.
Right, right.
Share what, what is the recommended timing, right?
Yeah. It's not like a formal request right now, I was just like, the, the way I think, you know, I'm just thinking about, again, all the time that goes to preparing for the exams for staff. Taking the exam, then what that details, so what do you throw out here? So, that's just, that's just a nice positive.
And then what, what is state assessments? What is, what are quick turnaround movements? Like screens, right, so we're not missing, yeah, so just that first step, we try to do quick ones, right? Long, boring, yeah, yeah, so it lives up, there's a lot of the Ames Web Plus, they're like one-minute probes, so they're, they're quick.
Okay. And I know you guys were reassessing, like, you were changing this because you were, like. I'm trying to, like, what is the improvement, what is the, like, what are you looking for? Like, when you changed the assessment, when you're kind of talking about how it was maybe too spread out, is this one like more condensed, or is it like? How is this, how does this benefit teachers or students, the changes, or? Does that make sense, I'm just.
Well, we did, most of the shifts we did, um. Were in the elementary.
Okay.
Cause they had that Ames Web plus rollout last year, right? And they were doing star assessment, kind of in those same windows.
Okay.
We tried to layer it so that we were thinking that beginning of the year, the Ames Web Math, because it is a lot of one-to-one and getting to know level teachers. And even like third grade has like a one-minute probe, there's a one-minute probe for every grade level, and then some computer. Um, because I'm an opportunity to meet with a student, right?
Okay.
And to get, kind of get that somewhat out of the way, then we can start doing some teaching. And then start digging in, and then we circle back later with the ELA. So that we're not do, doubling down on math and ELA at the same time.
Okay.
Now we gotta stretch the teaching end, and we circle back, we do a screener a week, and then we get back to teaching. But just trying to keep it, you know. A little bit today, well, yeah, okay, yeah.
When you're doing like the one-minute screenings, is it the classroom teacher who's doing them? So they're popping out of the classroom?
No, they're just in, right before recess or anything.
Grab a couple of kids.
They're reading it, you know, in the reading spot.
So they're doing it in the classroom, so it's really not disrupting necessarily.
Do that, you know, anyways.
Right.
You know what I mean, so it's kind of, we're trying to replace some things that we're already doing. One-to-one check-ins and all those things, just give it that's in the aims web and.
All the screening stuff, I mean, I always go back and forth, I know there's some research, I don't remember what age group it was done in, that shows that. You actually learn best with a lot of testing, do you remember that research? It's like cognitive research that. Uh, like if you're constantly quizzed, performance actually improves in terms of learning and retention. I don't know if it was at the college level. It's why my husband gets, used to give quizzes in every single class, like inspires, but I don't know if it works at the junior levels, like the young levels, but yeah, I always. I'm always curious whether, whether it's positive or negative to spend more time and just sort of like the hunt for, for how much you know. It's just, just what's on my mind. I'm also curious about the G T screener, that you called it the COGAT, right? Can a parent, is there only that one opportunity for third graders, or would a parent or a caregiver or a child be able to ask like? I know I'm in second grade, but I want to do the COGAT. Right, to be able to, so at any time someone could still access that test, it's just that in third grade, you're doing it universally.
We're doing it universally, and then anytime, you know, a parent, a staff member would like to nominate a student.
Right.
Key testing, that can happen at Kita.
And then if they did that, that would be the COGAT.
Well, there's a, there's a several other assessments that she likes as well, but then.
Yeah, I'm still doing high key testing. It's like he's.
I don't think she's.
I'm doing that.
That's okay, yeah. Good, 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 good. But it's learning processing, yeah, it's no music, yeah, awesome, what you know.
Yeah.
Awesome, okay, that's all I've got, Chris?
Um, I had asked a question before the meeting about K four testing for math, did we really need to do it, or how useful was it? And you soaked me over. When you started about it being one-to-one and being pretty similar to what we're doing with kids already, but it's putting them on computers. And that kind of thing, so you won me over there. I also support the changing from star to aims web, that's just a decision, I think. To be really intentional about the testing we're doing, and yay for the COGAT. I personally see, first of all, I think it's, it goes very well with our equity lens.
Okay.
Because it removes human bias in referring students, right? It's, and it's, it doesn't eliminate the ability to refer students.
Right.
But it's another way of catching, and I have seen a kid with an I E P qualified through the COGAT who would not have otherwise been.
It also feel.
Oh, go ahead.
I also feel like COGAT gets us closer to where the audit that was done a number of years ago, said.
Oh, that's right.
It should be added that there should be more made universal screening process.
Hey, anything else, members of public visitors, online? Are these going to be available to families? To know.
This will be on the website.
Awesome.
Love that.
Love it. So I will say, based on rough calculations of looking at testing minutes, with just an average for testing, if I'm doing math time, you're looking at about eight hours. Or seven, seven point five hours per student's in grades. Five, six, seven, and then you're looking at close to eight hours for those students in four and eight because of the additional forward test, and it's, it's.
For the entire year.
For the entire year, and it's probably around seven point five, also at the elementary level. So for, because the, the third grade students don't take those additional tests and forward, even adding that COGAT, there is pretty, pretty.
That's okay.
Yeah.
And then, yep, and then is there prep time, students are, is there prep? Like students have to study for the form, or no? There's nothing like that, right?
Just embedded things that you can do maybe shouldn't have every day, right?
I remember getting emails saying, please have your kids get good night's sleep, that kind of stuff, which seems fair.
Yeah.
That seems fair.
Important, I, I think there are some like intentional things that I know they've done at Glen Hills to, to help students, I mean. Part of testing is also unlocked in the threat, because we're on testing, right, like how do you deal with fatigue, how do you deal with finding the best answer, how do you eliminate choices? So they do some work around that, which I think are unfortunately probably some life skills that we need.
Yeah, it's high school prep, yeah.
Where you have finals week.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, anything else? Thank you so much.
Excellent.
All right. Moving on to our school safety plan, item four A on the agenda.
All right, so our school board policy eighty-four twenty states that the school board should approve a safety plan, so last school year, we brought forward a safety plan.
Oh, I am so sorry, going back, are we supposed to approve the testing schedule? On the agenda, it said you wanted us to, kind of moving to approve it.
Likely so, because our policy indicates that the board.
I'm so sorry, I do want to make sure the board has an option.
So if someone wishes, on item three B, we could entertain a motion to approve these assessment calendars.
I have a question, clarification first.
Yes.
You were saying that these are estimated calendars? Is that right?
The windows.
The windows.
Windows are, like, it's not specific dates.
Right, but the windows, so we have this, the windows are not going to change, okay, I just wanted to make.
Right, right, those are windows within, yeah.
Okay.
They'll happen within those.
I apologize for.
I move to approve the district and school assessment calendars for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six year.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Any close? Same, motion carries, we have officially approved the assessment calendars. Phew. Thank you. Uh, oh, yeah, so. Motion by Danielle Bailey, second by Karen Cronwell, what the motion was to approve the district and school assessment calendars for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, the motion. Onto the school safety.
All right, thanks, Jen, the school board policy eighty-four twenty, we brought forward a school safety plan last year for the board to approve. Upon review and our collaborative work with our partner districts, there is a kind of a standard protocol. That was not being used in our previous plan in terms of just the, the way in which we talk about. Uh, the drills and what we call them, so like using the term lockdown, it's a standardized practice across schools, so. Um, in the work that Leon, Michelle, and Ryan Cracker did on reviewing the school safety plan, we, they made a decision in consultation with me. To move towards that, so the language is consistent between both Glendale and then what they did in San Diego. Um, that will also lead to an enhancement of having. Uh, Mr. Leon Williams will be getting laminated posters and, and visual cueing and stuff like that for our staff, so that we have more consistent language in our safety plan. So those are the vague changes that were, that took place in that plan. Um, in addition to that, it was melding in our school crisis response team plan to the areas around responding to mental health as well as health crisis. And so making sure that that was incorporated into this plan. So those were sort of the big significant changes, and I didn't see anything else in there. No, so, and that information is in executive content, as we need to keep our safety plan confidential, so that we protect our students and staff. Um, in addition to that, our policy also indicates that the board needs to review our emergency drill logins for the prior year. Um, so I have attached, which is in public content, which you can see all of our emergency drill logins for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Um, so monthly fire drills, our yearly tornado drill. And a yearly craze drill, which will now be considered to be a lockdown drill, and we'll use that language so that it's.
Yeah.
Craze.
Yeah.
It's, it's supposed to, it spans for civilian response to active shooter event.
Right.
So not all situations that require a lockdown would necessarily be an active shooter, so I have any.
Right.
Which on that would be important.
Right.
Yeah. Stop taking kids to.
Yep.
So, um, any additional, I guess, questions?
Let's start with a motion, so I don't forget again.
Okay.
If anyone would like to make one.
Do, can we move to approve both?
Uh, I don't think we approve the, the drill logins, right? We're just approving the school safety plan.
I move to approve the school safety plan as presented.
Second.
All right, discussion.
I just, I want to say I really appreciated the language changes, definitely they added a lot of clarity, and I think everybody involved will have a much better understanding of the process.
Danielle? Um, I have a question of curiosity, and I. It just, it's just a wondering, I noted in the login drill that the December's drill was canceled because there were too many guest teachers. And I'm curious about that, because of course our guest teachers should know our drills as well. You know what I mean, I'm just curious about that thinking and whether.
Well, considering the fact that there is an option to run the drill and to, when you're, you're balancing, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah.
Just, our guest teachers do have a drill, they do have fire evacuation procedures as a part of their substitute folders.
Right.
But I think when you have a building full of subs, especially when you have, when we're trying to cover special education needs.
Right.
Um, thinking about doing a drill that is technically optional.
Right.
On a day like that is a, is a call between what, what validates student safety versus the practice.
Right, yeah, I mean.
But that, you know, that regarded that question.
Yeah, because I, I was like, that totally makes sense, because you want the people who are in the building the most to know how the drills work. And yet also, gosh, we have that many subs, so, okay.
And it just, it just noted like as part of, a part of our district plan, in all of the classrooms are evacuation drill posters, so like. Teachers can refer, like if there was a guest teacher or somebody second into that room, there'd be a reference there.
Right.
As to which route that students should take out.
Right, yeah, and I immediately picture like twenty subs with classrooms they barely know outside.
And I, and I'm thinking as the building principal, I can certainly understand why Mr. Williams said, you know what, let's not.
Yeah, absolutely, just. Not judgment, no judgment, just. Yeah, okay, Chris?
Um, I really appreciated the changes, I thought they added clarity, and I just happened to read an article yesterday about these sort of drills. And it looks like everything that we're doing is aligned with best practices.
Katie?
Uh, I also like the changes, like being consistent is never enough, I mean, not all of our students will even finish here, so being consistent with any other school, if they might. End up in this is important.
Karen?
I saw.
Danielle, you guys.
She did, yeah, so, um, I remembered you shared the link with me for what was required, and the state statute says that two tornado drills and two craze drills are required. Every year, is it, or am I misunderstanding it? It's one eighteen point zero seven.
There's only one annual tornado drill.
Right, that's why, right, there was one tornado and one.
I mean, in any district, there's.
Oh, yeah, that's, I, that's, that's standard procedure in my chair. Okay, so maybe, I, that's the.
Yeah.
What's the section? One eighteen oh seven subsection two A one, once each month, blah, blah, blah. Case of fire. Uh, at least twice annually, the person having direct charge, they'll kill all peoples in the proximity of tornado or other hazard, at least twice annually without previous warning. Uh, evacuation in case of a school safety incident, oh, let me keep going, sorry. The safety drill may be substituted for any other drill? Is that something, like what's a safety drill?
It would be, that would include a fire drill, because you're still practicing evacuation procedure.
Oh, so that's what, is that, so the practice is that you substitute of. That means you have to do an extra fire drill?
It would be an extra fire drill or any other kind of safety drill, like even if you did just a soft, like stay in place kind of, you know.
Okay.
Piece, but, I mean, I think of practice wise, you could look at doing the, the lockdown drill twice a year, I don't think it's completely unheard of or uncommon. And probably wouldn't hurt to do it two times a year. Um, and I.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean.
It also is anxiety purple.
That's, that's.
Yeah, you know, that's what I was just going to ask.
I don't know that I. It's a tough, that's a tough bet.
I mean, I would be curious to know how students react to these drills. I have really, really strong, I'd say traumatic memories myself of childhood in Korea on the D O D base where I went to school. We would do bomb drills, and then in California, we would do earthquake drills, that is, the whole thing terrified me. So I am curious how, how students handle it, I mean, not for discussion today, but maybe it's, how, how would you feel about, uh, school board members who aren't in schools? Some, like, I mean, you guys are often in schools and drills happen, but I probably need to show up for one, just for my own edification, if that's okay, just see. Catch a feel for what it's like, how hard it is. Yeah. Okay, anything else, visitors? Thank you for the clarity of this information, we have a motion pending, it's a motion by Karen Cronwell. Second by Chris Robinson to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six school safety plan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, sentience, motion carries. Thank you, Anna. On by a superintendent.
Want to make sure, I think Leon and Michelle and Ryan, because they did the whole work. So, so Leon, yeah, and I think it put in some star work, so we're going to help support that, so.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, superintendent report, so I just want to update the board, kind of on some of the work, you're abreast of many of the things that are happening through my weekly updates. But just wanted to kind of codify that into. A synthesized report for you, sort of this building momentum towards this long-term vision, and I think getting those K P I's in place gives us sort of the aim to go towards the summer. And so with them in place, we've included trimester milestones with detailed action plans, that's a, that our administrative team is continuing to work through. Um, so that we can measure how we're moving forward in that progress. Um, I met with the guiding coalition from both Parkway and Glen Hills, and I led the teams in developing the school improvement plan, so they walked through. A continuous improvement process that's, contains an equity lens to it, so it was really thinking about the commitments they hold to those outside of the room. And within the room, so thinking about those other, the way that their work impacts others, and having that be front and center in how they develop those plans. Um, so I met with them both, and they did some really good work, and will continue to add to that work. Um, both of the schools landed on, um, the, the idea that they really need to improve their systems and structures around clarity around student expectations. And also teacher expectations, um, in terms of how to be foster practices around that, so there's some really good digging and work that's happening. Which directly aligns with another training that, um, we had a group of leaders go to with C S A one recently. Where they worked with multiple levels of systems of support, so learning and understanding how those systems can look in both academics and behaviors. So really getting to that idea that in schools where we support all students as they are, and move them to the best versions of themselves. That we have to have lots of different systems of support in place, and so what can those terms look like, and how do we identify those? Um, so they did looked at that from both an academic and behavior lens, and they're really going to dig into the behavior component of it in this, in this first part of the year. In addition to that, um, I worked recently with the teacher leadership, and so we worked with our, the school counselors, um, schools psychologists. School social worker, although she, she's on maternity leave, so she wasn't here. And then, um, also our, um, we worked with our coaches and interventionists of both math and literacy. And our dean of students, and so we led a leadership workshop, and it was probably one of the first times in, and they were like honed in on this, it was really great work. That it is the two times where, the only time that they've experienced where Parkway and Glen Hills teacher leaders came together to talk about what it means to lead us to districts, right? And, 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 and so it was like a really powerful networking time for them.
Yeah.
Um, and so some of the deliverables that they, that they walked away with, in addition to kind of defining what leadership is and using some formal definitions of how. Um, leaders can be anyone, administrators are hold that title because they do administrative functions, right? But anyone can be a leader, right? And really starting to frame some of that work for them, so it was really exciting day of learning, um, and they're going to be working on developing sort of. Advertisements about how they can support educators in our schools and students in our schools, that they're going to deliver to the principals to basically put out there to advertise their, what they can do to help with supports. As well as having a mechanism that, how do you ask for that support? So we're really trying to increase their visibility. We're sending a cohort of them this year to go to impactful coaching session with A S A. Um, and so there's some really good trainers that are doing, leading that coaching experience, so we'll be sending, I believe, our counselors, two of our coaches. Um, and who else, counselors, coaches, counselors and coaches this year, and then we'll get the remaining teacher leaders next year through that cycle. what else? Counselors, coaches, coach, counselors and coaches this year, and then we'll get the remaining teacher leaders next year through that cycle. So we've kind of broken it up so we can be physically responsible, but then also provide them with their own development.
Yeah.
And we've scheduled ongoing trimester meetings with them as a large group so that we can get to meet about, so we can create that network of places. So that to me is really exciting work. Um, our teacher value evaluation system was revised and I have the opportunity to present that to the board, um, for greater clarity around what is expected of educators in our district. And then, um, our transition to Parent Square has been, um, really successful for both communicating with staff and students have gotten a lot of positive feedback from parents, a lot of positive feedback from staff. Um, Diana has been amazing, um, like developing, um, really cool templates. So we've got, we're gonna send shared communication to both Parkway and Glen Hills, um, every week to staff so they know what's happening in both buildings and they can be up to date with that. And then, um, we've created a really cool template called our, our schools, our stories, and that will go out to families by weekly and it will be a combined Glen Hills, Parkway and district newsletter. And so we're really excited. There's some really exciting things happening with communication as well, so.
And I love it too cuz it's like I just click and it goes two places.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and we will be transitioning to, um, Parent Square has, uh, smart sites feature. So we'll be moving, they're in the background right now, moving our website.
Oh, great, oh, nice.
So that will help with kind of the, kind of a seamless, seamless way of like having that look, um, look the same, all like, you know, being, pull that, pull that together. So, so, um, so.
I'm just. We're sending our.
Street line communication.
Well, we're gonna make, we're gonna make detective parents out in California who went to a school meeting and looked at their principal and said, why is communication such a mess? And the work, we're gonna develop a map for that.
Yeah.
So, um, that's kind of where that.
Also, now the thank you card too, but also thank you for listening.
The other thing that, um, we've been working on is we've scheduled out monthly parent universities throughout the school year. Um, and we have asked that staff, um, as part of their contracted hours as, um, mandatory attendance that too, they can select that too they go to. So that we also get staff involvements in those as well. Um, and we've been working with PTO kind of on the side to say like, how can you support us and having some of those conversations around that, so.
Like daycare.
Um, yeah, or like playing fun activities for kids to do while parents are off.
Yeah.
Right, um, and so.
Meals?
And, and we're looking at meals, we're looking at Aramark to sponsor our first, not sponsor, but to, to go through to, to purchase meals for that first event.
Yeah.
Um, and then we're, we're gonna look at what our other options are for maybe possibly donations or sponsorship, right? Um, the universities cover different topics. I, we see this as a really good way to get community together to really focus on what's best for kids in our, on down the road, those communities, right? Um, and we're excited about it and, um, the team has done some work with finding some outside experts for some of those events. Some, some of it will be from our internal experts. So people will have information to share and, um, you know, incorporating time for some talk back and feedback with families so that we can engage and work together. It's exciting stuff.
And all the dates are set.
It's like, so it's like, here they are.
Yes, that's amazing.
Yes, you're up, any, for the comments or?
What?
You have your.
Wait, she's done?
She's done.
I'm done.
At the bottom. I followed along and I think she's done.
I am done.
No, I'm just so grateful and I'm just so excited. I was literally like boom, like beaming and bragging about Parent Square to whoever I saw by the elite pool. As soon as it came out, I was like, have you seen it? Have you gotten the email? Do you know what's going on? Um, you know, and so it's, it's great to be able to have that when parents reach out too. And they're like, welcome to my area, you know, I was like, just wait, like, it's coming, we're working on it, you know, so, um, just thank you for all this hard work. Thank you to everybody. Sorry.
Yeah, we're over here like, you know, uh, Parent Square is fantastic. Even I can use it. So good. I'm just successfully clicking and it took me like a half an hour, even though you sent a text saying something about the Parent Square app.
Hmm.
This is where my head is. I was like, like half an hour later, I was like, oh, there's an app. It's fantastic, um. I just love what you're describing about bringing people together from both schoolhouses. It's just, it's been something we've talked about for years and to see it finally happening is just like, I, I could almost cry, um. It's just fantastic. I love your message about anyone being leader.
Hmm.
It's just about stepping up and doing it. I just love that so much. So I'm just really thankful that you're leading that work, Anna. Cuz it's hard to share power, not for you, obviously. You're good at it, but you know, it's hard to share power. And I just think it's really exciting that you're modeling that, um, because, you know, capacity rises, you know, if we push people, you reach, you stretch, you grow, all that. So I'm super, super excited, um. I am wondering if we can come to Parent Universities, right? So we should try to attend as well. I'm gonna have name tags soon. It says it's still processing.
On your.
I bought you each a, a wooden name tag. So soon we can show up and chill and support and all those things. So, um, sitting here working through my notes. I just love it all. I love it all. And I also want to just thank you, the leadership team for working so hard for us. I know it's just been a while. It's, it's just incredibly exciting to see this starting to line up and all this work moving forward. Chris?
Thank you for all this. This is wonderful.
Hmm.
Um, and also you're probably already thinking about this, but, um, for parents, for Parents Square, if people aren't signed up, I imagine the open houses will be.
Yeah.
You've probably got some plan to really push it.
We can, we know who hasn't signed up on the backend too, so we can.
Gentle reminders.
Next.
And even that is just. Ah!
Do it again. I feel like I have to say I'm glad Parents Square is as easy for you as this for us. Like, I was like, crap, another app. I don't know if I really want this. So after all these years in the district, like, we've done a lot. And none of them have been easy. And I'm like, I don't wanna learn anyone, but you don't have to learn this one. It just works.
Yeah.
And it's wonderful.
Crazy. Or?
I would just, echo the appreciation of all the work it took to do this, right? Like, as, as easy as it is to use the app, I'm sure it was not easy to get everything ready to go. And I suspect that's been part of the load this summer. So thank you for all of that. And I'm excited to hear that our website will be upgraded and attorney advised, since that's another really key piece.
Yep. When are we out of our current website? March, so we plan, we, we plan on, it'll probably be like a little bit of an overlap. So what's nice about that is it gives us a really good opportunity then to do a faster number. So we can really keep have eyes on making sure all the right materials in all the right places and like any of their additions and enhancements. I think we may even get that done before we launch it.
All right. Do you think, you imagine you would have a, um, some caregivers do some beta testing on it as part of that or before you roll it out?
Just.
Or staff?
I don't know. I mean, we're at the part now where we're just building it.
Right.
And what we want in it. And then they take it and they get fancy and.
Got it.
So once we see that, I think we have a better idea.
If we need to take a look at it.
Yeah, and a coochie, just asking them whether it makes somebody shudder, should it? Ask him to look at it.
Yes.
Yeah, it's like his.
Yeah. Yeah, he's, he's a good, he's a good resource for that.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Okay, anything else? Going once, going twice. Thank you, Anna. Onto use item five B staffing changes. Big list.
All right, get ready.
We still have a couple more hires to make, but we're almost there. We're almost there.
Yay.
Um, so, um, the board needs to approve our, uh, recommendations for the, uh, resignations of Teresa Burbach, who is a special education teacher at Parkway Elementary. Um, Monique DeJune, which who is an SE teacher at Glen Hills that we started on and decided to take another position after she, um, signed on with us. Um, and then we're also recommending the hiring of Kalen Turks Matuski, who is gonna be taking over the position that, um, Mr. June left open. Uh, Jacob Quick is going to be a second grade teacher at Parkway and Isabel McCauley will be a first grade teacher at Parkway. So those are our certified staff positions. So I don't know if we wanna start there.
That sound.
I, I propose we start with then the resignations, the resignation as a separate motion. Can we just, should be clear that by resignation?
I love to approve the resignation of Teresa Burbach, Burbach. Uh, and Monique DeJune. Do I need to say the positions? Sorry.
No, okay. Signed it. Any, any discussion on those resignations?
I just had a quick question and maybe if it's not appropriate for hoping, but were these, were we waiting on one of these for a moment? Like, is, was there liquidated damages involved for either of these?
Um, for both. We're still waiting for liquidated damages.
Okay, but they're, so.
They've, they've all been invoiced.
So does our, um, approval of their resignation release them from that obligation?
Don't think so.
Hmm, well, we could.
Yes, you have.
You could, you could. You could approve the, if I wanted to, you could make the motion clear with an amendment to approve the resignation, um, subject to appropriate liquidated damages, as I forth.
But if we have to hire their replace, I, I'm not trying to create a problem. I was just curious. That was something that was, uh, because I'm remembering the contracts being like the, like the board can. Anyway, so I'll just go with whatever your recommendation is here.
Well, we could amend.
Um, I think the recommendation is that they've been, they, they, I would say we need to move forward with the resignation so we can complete the hires of the other people.
Right, that's it, yeah.
Those invoices have already been taken to those, um, people who have resigned.
Okay.
Definitely the way that ends up working is invoices then go to the hiring register.
Register, right, okay.
Waiting for payment there so it can get kind of held up.
Okay, okay. I just.
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay.
That was it.
Good. Anyone else? Okay, uh, motion by Daniel Bailey, second by Karen Cronwell to approve the resignations of Teresa Burbach and Monique DeJune, DeJune. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes. Then the hires. Matizuski.
Oh, okay. I move to approve the hire of Kalen
Hmm.
Turks Matizuski as a special education teacher at Glen Hills. Oh, Jacob Quick. Second grade teacher at Parkway. And Isabel McCauley, first grade teacher at Parkway.
Second.
Any discussion? This is a huge amount of work. I know how much work you guys have been doing just processing these interviews, all that. So thank you for chugging along with us, um. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, sorry, I should have restated it. Motion by Daniel Bailey, second by Karen Cronwell to hire, approve the hires of Kalen Turks Metazuski, Jacob Quick and it's almost all of it. Motion carries.
Welcome to the district.
Yes, welcome, welcome, and thank you. All right, next.
All right, for full transparency, I'm bringing forward our, um,